If we'd all start, stand for a moment of silence and then remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in equal liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the agenda with adding George's presentation?
Still moved.
Second.
Eric Kaye, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. What we're going to do today is we're going to do our updates from our different agencies, then public comment, and then George Stokas has a presentation that he will do after public comment. So with that, since the sheriff has things he needs to do, we'll start with him as for an update on state of the county law enforcement, law enforcement line.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Administrator, County staff. Thank you for inviting me here this morning, and I want to do two things, give you kind of an overview of where we've been as a sheriff's office since we met this time last week, and to answer any questions, and to try to understand if you're going to have a broader conversation later about changing the status of the beaches insofar as closures, I'd like to either, I'll stay available for that. So I think that's going to be an important discussion. That's my understanding that you're going in that direction to talk about it. So I want to be part of that discussion. Let's just go through this real fast and then any questions you have. Our golf courses are very much status quo since we met last week. We continue to respond to some calls for service because of complaints of social distancing. We continue to spot check. What we do is we check license plates in the parking lots if we seem to have compliance, and most of the people are Martin County residents. We keep on going. Your Parks Department has done a magnificent job and really have gotten into the weeds of the nuances of what has to be done to be in compliance. Throughout the week, we've had a significant increase in people seeking to gain access to the beaches. We do feel pressure building. There's a sense that people do want to get back out on those beaches. We continue to turn residents away from the South who are attempting to gain entrance. That seems to be, they seem to be a little less law-abiding than Martin County residents. And if you've tracked any of our efforts throughout the last seven years, it does seem that a lot of the criminality that you've empowered me through the budget to take care of comes from the South, which is not to say we don't have an occasional misgrant here in Martin County, but they're much less than our friends to the South. Last week, we encountered a substantial amount of out-of-county residents seeking access at the boat ramps. So the pressure at the boat ramps continues, and we continue doing our best there, which has been very successful. The sandbar, we've had a steady increase in activity since last weekend due to out-of-county residents, and we are currently near our capacity to maintain social distancing this weekend. So even considering the status quo, even considering not opening boat ramps and not opening the beaches, we still have our hands full trying to keep people from violating the social distancing, they're not requirements actually, they're directives from the governor, and that's a real, that continues to be a challenge. Since April 2nd, we've responded to 570 COVID-19 calls, and 168 of those were complex enough they actually required a first responder from the sheriff's office. So what is the bottom line? The bottom line for us is we maintain the status quo. We're still able to respond to calls for service. Our response times have not gone up, and thankfully, we do have some resources extra because of the SRO program, because of the courts, and because of our reassigning our community-oriented policing unit and various other elements within the sheriff's office. Our first and primary responsibility is public safety. We continue to triage so that as important as COVID-19 calls are, if there's more of a priority call, a crash with unknown injuries, a domestic violence case, we go to those first. And then in closing, our social pressure, social, whatever word you would want to use, the pressure this has put on society continues to make itself known in domestic violence calls, suicide threats, suicide that are successful, and we feel it in those calls. It's clear, if you listen to my radio, our radio, that those calls continue to grow. So there is a pressure. As you push back on one part of society's normal behavior patterns, go out at night, have a drink, go to a restaurant, go to the beach, as you corral that, there is absolutely a cause and effect on those social pressure calls. So if I can answer any questions, I'll be glad to try.
Commissioner Kaye.
Sheriff, thank you very much. You know, when I'm speaking to residents about the boat ramps and potentially parking lots where we don't want to have a lot of craziness, if you will, a lot of people ask about ticketing, parking tickets, the fines that are associated with parking tickets, and maybe this is also from Ms. Krista, do we have the ability to, are those set by the state? Do we have the ability to enhance those fines? Because I think if someone were to take a boat trailer and a large pickup truck and get to the boat ramps and realize that the parking lot is full, and then they get creative within the parking, the park boundaries, but then once that runs out, I've also heard from colleagues in counties north of us that people were basically putting their trucks and trailers all along A1A or wherever they could put them. And if it's a $45 or a $50 fine, then most people would look at that and say, that's just a parking fee. But if it was a $300 fine, maybe we could tamp down some of those folks that are visiting from other areas. I'm not sure how we could do that. If the penalty had some really sharp teeth, that might be helpful.
I'm going to defer to your legal counsel.
Fantastic.
Yes, Commissioner, I'll be happy to look into it and see what we can do, bring it back to you. Yes, I think we can. I think it would be an amendment of the, I believe it's set forth in the ordinance and maybe simply a resolution. Happy to bring it back.
I'd be glad to make one of those resolutions. Thank you.
Commissioner Hurd.
Yeah, I had no inkling that we were going to discuss reopening beaches. I think it's a terrible idea, particularly in light of the pressure that I'm seeing down south. I am absolutely certain that if we would open beaches, that there would be a flood of beachgoers coming from South, all of South Florida, and we don't have the resources to patrol that or to enforce it. So I, if we're going to have a discussion about opening the beaches, let's have it right now.
My opinion is that we do not need to create a destination, so I'm really not interested in that. Until Palm Beach County does something, then we can begin the conversation. Until that point, we'd be literally back to the exact same place we were three or four weeks ago. Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the idea that we talked about on Tuesday was not to discuss today, the idea of opening our beaches today. The idea was to have a plan in place that when the appropriate time and the governor's decisions and down south and everything is somewhat coordinated, that we would actually have a structure in place that we could, we could give to staff to say, when that time comes, we wouldn't be trying to catch up to a decision. It wasn't to say today that we would be making a decision one way or the other. It was much more to have that structure in place that when that time came, staff could go, okay, all we need is either the governor's direction to say, counties, you're on your own, do your thing, or when South Florida, and I agree with all of what you've just said, when they are consistent with what they are going to do, that's going to drive our decision, I think.
And that is exactly what Mr. Stokas is working on and what his presentation is about.
Correct. I just, I didn't, where the conversation was going was off the rail, and it wasn't meant to go off the rail. It was meant to say, and George has a presentation that he'll go through, and hopefully that'll outline what that looks like. Commissioner Heatherington.
I would just echo that. Certainly, the governor didn't put the restrictions on our beaches. That's a local decision, but until some of our counties to the South make some movement on there, then there's an extreme amount of pressure, you know, as the sheriff just said, and I don't think that we can bear all that pressure without some movement down south. So that's my opinion on that.
If you're not going to have a discussion, then I think that's a wise decision. We're not ready for it yet. That's perfect. I can, I'll be glad to stay in touch with the administrator as we, because I want to have, I want to at least proffer our position and how we think opening those beaches would make more sense from an enforcement standpoint, and that's all. So if that discussion's not happening today, good.
I think, I agree with everything that I heard. I don't think I came this morning to make a decision on whether or not we were going to open the beaches, but I still think it's important, as Commissioner Smith said, that we have a strategy in place so that we're not hearing some news, Palm Beach County, you know, without any collaboration with us, four days from now, open all their beaches for whatever reason. I don't believe they'll do that, but if they were, we shouldn't then just expect our staff and as commissioners to magically have a plan. We should be discussing these things upfront, and of course, it would have to be in collaboration with you, Sheriff, because you and your department are the tip of the spear. If we create a plan that you don't feel is enforceable, then we've wasted everyone's time. So I agree. It's only a conversation. It's not a decision. Thank you.
And maybe my closing thought is, to use your analogy, if we're the tip of the spear, we're the first to draw blood. So be careful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith. Sheriff, do you have George's presentation?
I, we'll get a copy of it.
Okay, because I don't know how long all the other presentations will take this morning, but in George's presentation is an outline and a structure that would be great to have you to comment on if you can stay.
Then I'll stay.
Okay. Next up, Cleveland Clinic, Chris, Chris Skoka and Scott Samples. I was practicing it, and then I forgot. I'm sorry. If you would say it for the record, that'd be wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Chris Saska, Chief Operating Officer for Cleveland Clinic Martin Health. I'm here this morning to provide an update on COVID-19 and what the Cleveland Clinic has been doing. We are continuing to see a positive trend of COVID-19. Martin County's growth rate over the past seven days has been 2%. This is a significant difference from the beginning of April, where we were seeing a growth rate of up to 25%. We continue to see very limited cases coming to our two hospitals in Martin County. Last week, we had four admissions. This is down from the prior week, where we saw seven new admissions into our hospitals. So again, a very significant trend, positive in the right direction. However, we are still seeing positive cases coming through our tents. We will continue to provide our tent locations for our patients, and regarding the results, that has significantly improved. Of the 1,600 tests that we have performed, we have resulted 96% of those as of April 22nd. So that continues to improve as we move forward. Regarding our drive-through tents, and as we have been managing through this pandemic, the guidelines, you know, that we have said earlier in the pandemic, we are looking to change those, those criteria for those to be tested. This has taken place over the past week. Today, we are testing anyone over the age of 16 who has a fever and respiratory illness such as cough, runny nose, or sneezing, and it also includes any individual with a fever or gastrointestinal illness. Again, this is just our wanting to make sure that we're capturing these patients and we're able to care for them the way we have. Our goal is to try to manage their care, and if we can capture it earlier enough, manage their care at home where we've been really successful, and avoid the admissions into our hospitals. Individuals, again, will still be required to call our nurse triage lines and to schedule that appointment. Regarding our surge planning, we continue to refine our surge planning. A lot of effort has been taken, not only within Cleveland Clinic Martin Health, but also with our community partners in working with us to make sure that our surge plans are ready. We'll continue to document that. Right now, we're continuing to refine our staffing for those surge plans, and I know that Mr. Lord has spoken to you in past meetings about the capacity that our hospitals are able to surge to. Resumption of non-essential surgeries with the, on March 9th, Governor DeSantis executed an executive order, as we all know, postponing non-essential surgeries for 60 days. That order currently expires May 8th, pending any changes from the governor's office. We have been reviewing all of our backlog cases and any new cases that our office physicians have added to the schedule in order to prioritize those cases. This is going to be a very thoughtful manner. We are looking currently at just those outpatient cases that will be going home same day, in addition to those that only require 23-hour stay or less. We will be avoiding any cases that require an admission into a skilled nursing facility or rehab facility. Again, these are patients that we can have their procedures done, that we can, that could go home the same day and continue to monitor their care. Again, we will continue our precautionary measures for these cases as we look to open things up. We will continue to manage our visitation. In addition to that, and as we have over the last several weeks, we will be pre-screening all those patients that are coming in for procedures 24 to 36 hours prior to their procedures, to be pre-screened for COVID-19, and so that, again, we can, this is in an effort to protect our patients, our families, and our caregivers within our hospitals and our ambulatory surgery centers. One of the other ways that we've been able to ensure continued care for our patients is through virtual health. We currently are seeing 70% of our normal visit, daily visit volume through virtual health. 80% of the patients that we see today are through virtual health, and we continue to see those numbers increase. We are still seeing face-to-face visits for radiology and lab tests and our urgent care, but we, again, the, we are continuing to see some strong numbers through virtual health to be able to maintain the care of our patients with chronic disease or have that acute illness. We intend to continue this as we move through this pandemic and throughout the rest of the year as an alternative for patients to be able to meet with their providers. I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to come this morning to present to you. I am encouraged and thankful for the collaboration that the county has with us to protect and care for our community. Thank you, and I'll open for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Saska, thanks for coming. I think that you're doing a great job. You're talking about pre-screening for elective surgeries and talking about 24-hour and 36-hour pre-screening for COVID-19. Does that mean that you're getting back test results in less than 24 hours currently?
No, we are, we are, these patients will go through our rapid testing, so we'll be able to test them the day of. Because of some of the procedures require some preparation prior to, such as colonoscopy screenings and the prep that's required there, depending on the procedure, we'll be able to test. And we, what we're doing is not testing the day of, the day morning, so we don't have the patients coming in at 7:00 in the morning. We'll test the day before, and if those that require a longer ability to prep for their procedure, we'll probably do it a day and a half to two days before.
And currently with the testing that's being done, are you doing nasal swabs?
Yes.
And how long, what's the turnaround time to get test results generally?
Generally, within a half hour to an hour, depending on demand.
Okay. And how about antibody testing? Is that on the way?
We are currently not, Cleveland Clinic is currently not doing antibody testing. It continues to be evaluated, and we are watching, we know that the CMS and CDC continue to work with the companies for antibody testing. The accuracy is just not there yet for us to be able to present it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have Carol Ann from the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you all. You know, we continue to be so grateful for all of our partners that have been going above and beyond to respond to this virus, including our Martin County Emergency Management, our school district, our law enforcement, and especially Cleveland Clinic, and so many more, our nonprofit organizations, to working to keep our residents safe and healthy. Currently, the Florida Department of Health Dashboard is reflecting 166 confirmed cases in Martin County, five deaths, and there are 29,648 total confirmed cases in the state of Florida. One thing is, we realize that the community is eager to return to regular operations, but it is essential that everyone continue to protect themselves and others by following the prevention message, measures that we have spoken about over and over again. And I'm sorry if I sound like a broken record, but it's really, really important that we maintain good hand washing, cleaning high-touch surfaces, staying home when you're sick, maintaining the social distancing, and the recommendation of wearing cloth face coverings. That will protect you, that will keep my germs to me and your germs to you. So that will help in reducing the spread. We also encourage our residents, of course, to call their healthcare providers if they are feeling ill, again, to rule out any other types of viruses or flu, anything else that might be happening, to rule that out first. As far as Commissioner Smith, I want to get back with you regarding the antibody testing, and just as Mr. Saska said, there is still a lot of question regarding that. There still needs to be a lot of vetting done. The other thing is that there are a number of tests circulating, so it's really important that when people, if they're going to go for that antibody test, at least make sure that it has been approved by the FDA, emergency approved by the FDA. The other thing is, is with this virus, as you know, since it's still so new, although someone may have the antibodies, we're not sure how long those antibodies will remain in someone's system. So there may need to be further antibody testing down the road. Also about plasma, I know you had mentioned that last week. So OneBlood is collecting plasma from individuals who previously had had the coronavirus, and then they are using that plasma to provide for those that are ill, to administer that plasma to them in the hopes that their antibodies will, there'll be additional antibodies and that that will help them fight off the virus. OneBlood does have a specific requirement, and you can go to their website at www-oneblood.org. Also, of course, you know, our DOH dashboard is still at WWFloridaHealthCOVID19.gov, where you can find the latest information. DOH also has the call center 24/7, and that is 866-779-6121 for any questions. Of course, we still maintain our local call center at 221-4000, option nine. And I just want to thank you for all your support and as we continue to work together to keep our community safe, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner Heatherington.
It seems like the demand for the swab testing has decreased, and the CDC guidelines are still the same they were seven weeks ago, correct? Have you heard anything about changes to those guidelines?
Yeah, I have not at this, at this time. I have not, no.
And then the swab test is still supposed to be free?
Absolutely.
And I keep hearing from a number of community members that there are either urgent cares and things in the area charging upwards of $200 for this swab test.
I would recommend that anyone that is considering that at some of the urgent cares, if they really ask about all of the fees, there may be administrative fees or other fees for the visit. You know, I can't really speak for them, but the actual specimen collection, testing should be free.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, now for our current favorite Emergency Management Director, Michelle Jones. Award-winning.
Thank you, Commissioners. Lots of stuff. All right, good morning. Hopefully, you guys can hear me, loud and clear. Perfect, thank you. Good morning, Michelle Jones, Emergency Management Director. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates on our operations. Yesterday, we had an outstanding team effort, and we were able to drop food boxes to an area of 175 families under surveillance from the Florida Department of Health. This effort is designed to empower those individuals and residents to stay home for the two weeks and not seek food from grocery stores or highly populated areas. This team effort is really between the coordination of food donations from the Treasure Coast Food Bank and House of Hope, vehicles from Salvation Army and the Martin County School District, volunteer and staff support from the Florida Department of Health, United Way, Martin County Fire Rescue, and Ocean Rescue, who helped with sorting the food, loading trucks, and then delivery, and site security from Stewart Police Department and the Martin County Sheriff's Office. We've also coordinated over 85 resource requests from the Florida Division of Emergency Management on behalf of our first responder agencies, healthcare facilities, including assisted living facilities, nursing homes, and urgent cares, and the school district. To date, we have provided over 3,000 gowns, 32,000 gloves, 118,000 N95 surgical and procedure masks, 11,000 face shields, 1,125 coveralls, 2,000 shoe covers, 2,000 head covers, and several gallons of hand sanitizers in various sizes. And this is through over 150 community deliveries, and we have been fortunate to date, we have not experienced any shortage in the protective equipment that we've provided, but we continue to monitor and coordinate with those agencies as needed. We continue to meet with our community partners and plan for our future. Our partners, including the municipalities, interested nonprofits, county department, and state and federal partners who have assisted in the response effort. To date, we've conducted or hosted over 100 calls daily, including daily conference calls with the Florida Division of Emergency Management and the Florida Department of Health, weekly Department of Health and Cleveland Clinic meetings, and twice-weekly Emergency Operations Center briefings, unified command meetings, and Community Recovery Task Force meetings. We also look to hurricane season, which is just around the corner. We're meeting with the school district, Department of Health, the sheriff's office, and planning for social distancing guidelines at the shelters, identifying screening at registration, isolation areas within the facilities, and any additional resource needs. We might, we might need to protect the community should we need to issue an evacuation order in the time of COVID-19. Our community information center remains open at 772-287-1652, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That is staffed by our library employees, and they fielded over 2,000 calls from the public with an average of 62 calls a day. In the last 28 days, we've connected with our community with over 128,000 individuals reached via Facebook posts, over 91,400 reached via Twitter tweets, over 106,000 reached via YouTube, over 11,400 reached via Alert Martin, and over 324,000 coronavirus page views. We continue to post on social media, push Alert Martin updates, post the daily report, and provide weekday update videos via the county, via the county which are aired on MCTV at 4:00 and provide weekday update videos via the county, which are aired on MCTV at 4:30 p.m., Comcast Channel 20, U-verse Channel 99, and then posted on social and emailed out. Our dashboard continues to be available with Martin County-specific data at martin.fls.us/ covid19dashboard, and that tracks cumulative cases, age distribution, new cases by day, and test results provided from the Florida Department of Health. We are continuing to ask our community to take this seriously, take this time to stay home if able and connect virtually with family and friends, wear masks when in public, thoroughly wash your hands, and keep six feet between you and others when around people. And on a side note, we are forecast to have some severe weather this weekend, starting this afternoon between 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., with tornadoes possible and continuing into Saturday, mainly in the afternoon and evening. So we would encourage residents to register for Alert Martin at martin.fls.us/alertmartin, where if there is a tornado warning issued for their registered area, they would receive a call, text, and email notification. Is there anything that you would like to hear more information about?
Commissioner Heatherdine.
Can you give the public the number to text to sign up for Alert Martin as well?
Absolutely. So if you text "ALERTMARTIN," one word, to 888-777, you'll receive an email or a link in that text notification to register your specific address. And so if your address is registered, then you'll receive a call, text, email for a tornado warning in your area. Thank you.
Okay. Does it do address, or does it do cellphone?
So when you register?
You choose.
Yeah. When you register, you input your information, so it needs your address to send you a tornado warning because that's for a specific area. So as soon as your address is in the system, you can choose how you want to be notified, whether call, text, or email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next, United Way, Carol Peets.
How is everyone today? Everyone happy? It's Friday? I am. We continue to work together with our community partners. There's 21 agencies that meet via phone call. They're invited to come to the phone call so that we can look at our community and work on issues, whether it's an agency issue or a need that we have in the community. If we can't get the supplies or things that we need locally, then we push it up to the state levels to provide the things that we need. Currently, the school district is still supplying breakfast and lunch and has seen an increase of over 24% over the last week, which means that they're serving about 2,600 meals per day for children. Meals on Wheels also is serving lunch for seniors at about 550 on average per day, and they've seen an increase of 25% in their usage. And then our local pantries are being stretched to the limit, but they are also seeing an increase of about 30% to 40% per week. We are able to meet that demand because we are working together, and it's only by working together that we can make this happen. And I think, you know, I'm going to say, Michelle's amazing, if you all didn't know that already. She's amazing. And it's only through her help with working on this Recovery Task Force that we are able to do this kind of work together. On a quick note about the masks, we have distributed over 4,000 masks in Martin County, and we get calls every day from different people. We have a limited supply in our office. Our sewers, they keep doing it even though they hate it. They really do, but they know it's going to a good thing because I'm not a sewer. I think I've said that many times. But we are providing as many masks as we can to first-line responders and also seniors that call that are afraid. We actually have volunteers that will go deliver the masks to them, so please don't call our office on an influx because we have a limited supply right now. We're waiting for our next delivery. We also continue to coordinate volunteers throughout the community. There's over 150 that we have tracked hours with now, and I know there's more, but they've given over 1,500 hours to this community between masks and food pantries and all that kind of stuff. I want to reiterate again for shut-ins, if they're concerned, if they need anything, please call. There's help out there, whether it's Meals on Wheels, United Way, we'll find you the help that you need. There's nobody that should be concerned about that. Also, responding to the sheriff, I heard him talk about a lot of mental, you know, issues that are coming to the forefront. There's also help for children out there that are anxious. There's tele and virtual counseling going on through TICs and TEAMS, through Catholic charities for adults. If anyone feels anxious, there is help out there for you, and you can do that through your phone. It's been amazing. We're doing Zoom meetings all the time. It's great just to talk to somebody. So if they need it, there's people out there that will help. Other than that, just everyone, please be kind to one another. I know the stress is really hard right now, but honestly, if we're nasty to each other, that's not going to help. We really just need to take a deep breath, be kind to one another, and hope that we can get through this because we will and will be stronger. Any questions for me?
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, our supervisor of elections, Ms. Vicky Davis.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hurd, for recommending that I give an election update. Thank you, Chair Jenkins, for allowing me to be here today, and good morning to the other Commissioners and staff. I'm glad to give you an election update because we are, as an association, in a holding pattern right now. We are waiting for information and direction from the governor. I've distributed to each of you a letter that our state association sent to Governor DeSantis over two weeks ago, basically asking for the 65 other counties in the state of Florida that are not currently under Executive Order 19262 to be allowed to perform in the same manner, same fashion that both Bay Counties and Gulf Counties are under since Hurricane Michael. They have been able to open up vote centers or vote sites in lieu of precincts. And in Martin County, we are really pushing vote by mail, which we always do, but we've really ramped it up. I've provided you with a handout, a flyer, that we are distributing throughout the county. Thank you to the libraries. Thank you to Richard Riley and Jen for allowing those flyers to be handed out to patrons that are picking up books that they've checked out, encouraging them to request a vote-by-mail ballot. I answered the phone yesterday, and there was a couple on the phone who requested to vote by mail, and it was because they had received the flyer from the library, from a pickup of books. So thank you to the libraries. We have the flyers at our not-for-profits that are some of those that are continuing to serve patrons, Salvation Army, House of Hope. Rob took a great number of our flyers in handing them out to those patrons that are coming in daily to shop and purchase groceries. Gertrude Walden Childcare Center, the YMCA, NAACP, Banner Light Club. We made up posters as well, and those posters are being put out in the community. We asked the post office if they would post the posters for us and actually had to get permission. I'm waiting on a letter from Washington, D.C. They have granted that permission for the post offices to put the posters up, but they don't normally allow that, so they're making an exception. And we're getting the posters out to businesses and county facilities. Thank you, George, for taking some of our posters to post. And I know that Michelle was talking about Alert Martin. We've had a couple of texts go out through that process to vote by mail, and we've had over several thousand responses come in, so thank you to the county for doing that for us. We have electronic billboard space donated. Cities and municipalities have put links on their websites to our vote-by-mail link, and we just are looking for every avenue that we can to get the word out. Because, as you know, when you vote by mail, it limits that person-to-person contact. When we go into August, it sounds like we're still going to be social distancing. We, as I heard one of my counterparts in the Panhandle say, in March, with the presidential preference primary, we not only became, we were not only election officials, but we became public health officials too because of all of those voters going out to cast a vote. We had to make sure that we had wipes, that we had hand sanitizer. Now it's going to be the social distancing also involved there. So if we can have the vote centers, vote sites, we're asking for additional days for voting as well, and once those sites open up, they will continue all the way through Election Day. Just to give you a little bit of where we are currently with the election process, today at noon is the last day that candidates can qualify for federal judicial, public defender, and state attorney positions. So at noon, that closes. There will be a big sigh of relief around the county. You will hear it, I'm sure. And then, of course, our regular candidate qualifying begins on June 8th at noon and ends on that Friday, June 12th at noon. So any questions that you might have about elections?
Yes, ma'am.
I am a, I've registered to vote by mail, so I voted in the presidential primary by mail. Do I need to register again to vote in the primary and in the general?
It depends on how you have requested. It wouldn't hurt to call the office because, according to Florida law, you can only request for two election cycles. We're in the middle of one election cycle. So we can, by law, schedule our voters through 2022.
Okay. I think that's really important to make that point with voters so that they aren't complacent and think, oh, yeah, I voted last time absentee, so I'll automatically be sent an absentee ballot this time. We need to make sure that they're not complacent.
Right. Absolutely. And in addition to the flyers, we did mail postcards to every single registered voter's household who had not already requested vote by mail. So if you look on the back, it does address that issue. Commissioner Hurd.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to go on to public comment. I have two speaker forms. We'll begin with Mr. Rob Ranieri. Please keep it to three minutes, or Taryn will chastise you.
Tackle you at the microphone.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Ranieri with House of Hope. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I just wanted to give a public thank you this morning to the Emergency Operations Team, Michelle and Lisa, Fire Rescue, the lifeguards. House of Hope's had the opportunity to work closely with them through the whole COVID process, and it's been great to work with them. They're using our resources well. Hopefully, we're providing them assistance to keep some families housed rather than moving around the community that have been impacted by COVID, and hopefully it's making a difference for public health. Like I said, it's been great to work with them, organized and efficient and effective communications, getting a lot of good information from them as well that we can share with our clients and kind of eases some of the mental anguish that a lot of people are feeling right now, so that's been helpful as well. And then just a quick note on sort of our food situation in Martin County. We're continuing to get a lot of great resources in. Publix is releasing a large load of food to us at the end of this month. Our partnership with Farm Share, which is a statewide agency that gives us fresh fruits and vegetables, that's paying big dividends. We're getting a lot of great fresh produce in that we can push out, not just to our clients, but right now, we're working with about 15 other smaller food agencies, soup kitchens, and pantries across, really across the Treasure Coast and even into Palm Beach. So we haven't seen any shortages at this point. We're not feeling any. Hopefully, it'll continue on that way so we can meet the growing need. Last month, we were up about 30% in food. This month, it's about 50%. But like I said, we're able to continue to provide that to the people and to the agencies that need it most, and so far, so good. We're moving forward. The financial assistance requests, we have about 300 right now, and through funds at the United Way and the Community Foundation, we're able to also write those checks and meet those needs and help keep people housed and healthy. So so far, so good on that front in Martin County. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. David Heaton.
Children's Services. David Heaton with the Children's Services Council. Just wanted to update you a little bit, and I want to echo what Rob has said because Michelle didn't talk about everything that goes on behind the scenes, but there's an incredible amount of good work going on, on phone calls during the week to coordinate logistics for those kind of food deliveries, and particularly the ones in specific neighborhoods. There was a great deal of work done behind the scenes to get that done, and I have to thank Rob and Michelle and all of the people who are working with EOC, lifeguards, fire rescue. It's been an incredible experience. I just wanted to update you a little bit on the Children's Services Council's approach to all of this. As you know, and as I shared last time I was here, we're going to always take a measured, diligent, specific approach to funding anything related to COVID and throughout our process in general. We have worked particularly on the food distribution elements with the Boys and Girls Club. I will tell you that we heard from Fletch yesterday. Keith Fletcher is the director of the Boys and Girls Club. He informed us that he got his USDA waivers, he got his payroll protection loan, and is therefore returning or essentially not going to utilize the $30,000 we gave him to feed families on weekends. So that just illustrates what the Children's Services Council's approach is. There's a degree of responsibility with public funds. We have to not stray too far afield from our responsibilities by statute and our process. So although we have, and we're fortunate to have in this community, resources, and we're blessed to have adequate resources to address and respond to these kind of events, and we plan for that, we have an emergency operations plan that talks about pandemics, those resources, we're in for the long haul, so those resources need to be available for the long haul. For example, PPE is going to be essential to those out-of-school centers and those early learning centers who have to open up when we all go back to work. We have to prepare them for social distancing. Their facilities have to be clean, their staff have to be prepared to respond and be protected and protect the children that come back to them. So that's another piece that we're working on. I just wanted to share those things. We're in it for the long haul. We're at the table through all of this process, and I want to thank our partners and certainly the Community Foundation, United Way, and all of the partners who are sitting at the table each week to deliberate around the various applications that we receive for supplemental funds based on COVID's situation. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Stokis, I'm sure you have a public comment. Colleen just texted me. Did you get something that she just emailed you? Okay. Good.
Let me just bring them all up here, Commissioner.
George, I just sent you one, too.
Yeah. The first public comment is from Ms. Sophie Scholl. Commissioners, I have lived in Palm City since the 1980s. I have worked for Martin County Fire, have worked for Martin County as a firefighter. I have even built and held campaign signs for several of you and your predecessors. The situation in Martin County has spiraled downward into confusion and oppression. The original goal was not to overwhelm the healthcare system with rapid spread. Having worked in the healthcare field for decades, this is a respectable goal. However, the goal has now become to eradicate the virus into nonexistence at the expense of the economy and educational system and even our trust in government. By your decisions, you have communicated several activities such as beachwalking and recreational boating are highly dangerous, activities, except for those who live on the water. In that case, the activities lose any semblance of danger for those fortunate few. In regards to your decisions to opening the county to normal business and daily living activities, your policy appears to be wait and see what the surrounding counties do so we don't get caught in the headlines. Living in quarantine state and county this past month has reminded me of time I've traveled in countries with a history of oppression such in countries with a history of oppression, such as several Eastern European countries and Venezuela. Rather than being born and living in a country which recognizes and protects the freedoms given by God at birth, I have seen residents in public appear tense and fearful and suspicious of any passing person and emotionally snap if the customer standing in line behind them accidentally slips inside their invisible six-foot force field. This increasingly common mentality is not caused by a disease or science. This is caused by a fear mongering which you have allowed and even encouraged by your lack of leadership to protect these liberties. Each of us has a decision during the time to either grow as a family or community and help our neighbors and friends, or rather, to cause dissension and oppression, which unfortunately, Martin County Commission has chosen in several areas. I have witnessed multiple Martin County deputies show an attitude of disrespect and disregard to residents who are committing no crimes, but rather living daily lives and trying to cope with their new financial burdens and stress and restricted liberties. The deputies have acted as though they have several, as they have renewed and strengthened sense of authority and power. Just yesterday, I witnessed a deputy driving without emergency lights blast his siren at a family in Palm City crossing a quiet residential street in a golf cart and hollered out his window to move. Would he dare yell at a commissioner like that? Is this really community environment in which any of us wants to live? I refuse and will no longer comply. Now is the time to make your decision and lead our residents and our economy out of despair and fear instead of continuing this destructive path from which may take years to recover. It would be completely absurd to liken this situation to Nazi Germany or communism or socialism, wouldn't it? But if we take a step back and not look at the final...
Time's up, George.
The next public comment is from Ms. Jane Logan. I agree with Commissioner Hurd's earlier statement that the Martin County B.O.C.C. has a public responsibility. I believe one of those responsibilities is to set an appropriate example for the residents of Martin County. The fact you have elected to have in-person meetings to conduct regular business during this state of emergency is a failure in that responsibility. Particularly, when you look at both our, to our north and south, and see that both Palm Beach and St. Lucie Counties have elected to cancel their regular B.O.C.C. meetings. Perhaps you didn't discern from my prior emails, but it is not a matter of what's on the agenda or the ability for public comment. Until guidelines have changed and unless there's a real sense of urgency related to a piece of business, any message or county should be sending to residents is to stay at home, and applies to our county commissioners as well. The next public comment is from, oh, I got that one, is from Mr., oh, same one, okay. All right, the next public comment is from Kathy Duval. I'd like to suggest that Sandsborough Park be open to Martin County residents only, especially on weekends. Our central workers deserve time to use their boats. I believe it's unsafe to allow builders from other counties where there are more coronavirus cases. Next comment on a TX Sierra. I see that you opened up tennis and pickleball, why not disc golf? Next comment from Douglas Bent. I practice social distancing, I am 64 years old. The health of myself and of others is important to me while dealing with COVID-19. I enjoy water sports and have in the local area dating to 1966. I, I enjoy surfing lots in my favorite form. It's my favorite form of activity, just me and Mother Nature. I do not go surfing to socialize. In fact, I do not enjoy surfing next to people because the waves in Martin County, we, we have what is known as beach break. The waves do not form over a rock shelf that would produce a point break much like California or exotic areas where reefs abound. So by nature, the beach breaks, surfers are spread out and makes it much safer environment for the activity. No one wants to get hit by another surfboard. That is why surfers always are spaced several board lengths away. The problem is beach access, for surfing does not allow current, allow currently for this taxing, this taxpaying Martin resident. I would like to be able to park my car at one of the many public beach access areas and enjoy surfing. This is something totally different than laying on the beach on a towel next to one another. I would think the coronavirus would not exist in salt water. I need to exercise, this is why I surf, that, and the love of salt water. Please consider accommodating local surfers with beach access. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from, oh, got that one. Is from R.C. The Commissioner Hurd mentioned the story she had misreported informa, something with drone footage, and then I, it doesn't, I don't understand the rest of that. The next one is from Mr. Richard Kramer. I am writing this letter in an empty office with staff wondering if they can feed their families and pay their mortgage. As a business owner, I am burning through my savings to keep my business limping along. I have yet to receive any and may not even receive federal loans. As government officials, I am sure you are concerned about local businesses, but do not fully understand that what we businesses owner, what we business owners are going to, going through because you are continuing to get your paychecks. I understand that there is still concern about the virus. However, apparently, the measures taken may have been overkill. We citizens were to stay at home as to not overcrowd the hospitals by being sick. Obviously, that is not happening. We as citizens cannot sit until a time be determined. You worry about deaths from the virus. What about death of the economy, the associated businesses, and struggling families? As government officials, you should balance safety and our rights as citizens in a constitutional republic. That being the case, I implore the commission to allow businesses to open and people to live their lives in a free society. For the people that are still concerned about the virus, they can take responsibility for themselves by using masks, et cetera. And then we have, we have another one from Ms. Jennifer Nolan of Jensen Beach. Good morning, Commissioners. I am happy to see the numbers for Martin County COVID-related cases are low and stabilized. So many of us are jobless or have had hours cut back tremendously. I know people who are severely depressed from having to stay at home. I know people in need of elective surgery. Please open county beaches and boat ramps immediately. The numbers no longer support quarantine. However, perhaps you could recommend it for the immunocompromised and the elderly population, for those, or those who feel the need to self-quarantine. Please let us know about your plan to reopen the local economy. Thank you for your time. And Commissioners, the next one is from Dr. Brian Moriarty. And bear with me here because he does have some humor in here. Dear Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be heard today. I also want to thank Mr. Stokis for his passionate reading of all public comments. And then he says I remind him of a young Morgan Freeman. Now, that's really funny, Brian. Now on to public comment, can we start opening things up again? Okay, seriously, I know everyone is waiting on the governor to come up with a plan, but this commission right now, can we start the process by taking some stress off our community? Every day, we have a few, we have so few cases, but people are struggling so much financially and mentally. Your Facebook page has lots of support for reopening. I see no reason why we cannot begin the process today. Open the wide-open public parks so children can play. Open the beaches for a few hours a day so families can get some sunlight, heat and humidity to kill the virus, like they said in yesterday's briefing. Beaches are now open in lesser affected areas like Jacksonville, Daytona, Sarasota, Destin, and others. It needs to be something that families can enjoy again. Most little kids aren't playing golf, tennis and rac, tennis, racquetball, or pickleball. I know that makes some adults happy, but where is something for the children? Last time I checked, they are the safest age range in the whole crisis, yet nothing, having nothing to do but walk around their neighborhood. Our governor says that we have flattened the curve, we have to get back to some normalcy. Our kids need this, our economy needs this, our mental health needs this. Our people need this, take the first step today. And then he thanks me again for my passionate reading, and and he would like me to remind, to say thank you and God bless. Thank you. And that, Mr. Chair, I think is all the public comments I have. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I have, yeah, that's all I have, Commissioner. Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, is there anybody else that, okay. Rather than moving on to Commissioner comments, which I think would derail George's presentation, I think we'll just move right into, to that, so George will. George?
Passionate George.
Young Morgan Freeman, George.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, but it looks like I don't get to look at you during my presentation.
That's okay, George.
So I'm sure we'll be moving it.
You know what a young Morgan Freeman looks like?
Yeah, exactly.
That was Brian Moriarty. So, good morning, Commissioners. Today, we're here to talk about the possible reopening, the structured reopening of Martin County. And the first slide is to basically illustrate to you the timeline of the closures that were effective because of the governor, beginning with the state of emergency 20-52, and then eventually ending on 20-91 for the Safer at Home, which has limited essential services. The big takeaways from this is, number one, the previous, 2052 through 2071 expire on May 8th. However, 20-91 expires on April 30th. So in reading through Safer at Home, we were able to, we, we discerned and interpreted through the governor's orders exactly who is closing what and what was labeled non-essential. And through the state of Florida, they were, the governor's order essentially closed private non-essential businesses, that being restaurants, as well as craft, craft stores, movie stores, toy stores. It's easier to list all the stuff that was closed than all the stuff that was not closed, and that includes bars and restaurants. The governor's executive order also set the, the floor, or set the requirements of government quorum requirements, public activity requirements. The governor also closed state parks, preserves, sandbars, aquatic, those type of things. And again, we heard through the governor's interpretation that the governor's office set the floor, but that local government could be more restrictive. Martin County, however, because of that, we have restricted public access to, to our public buildings. Our park activities have been limited, and we've been working on those. The boat ramps have been closed, as well as the beaches and golf. We have had restrictions on golf. So probably the biggest question of the day is, what are the next steps? Staff is currently, we know that the governor has a task force. We are waiting for that task force to provide guidance in, in probably the form of an order. However, staff believes we can provide interpretation of those orders once we've received them to both our businesses and citizens. As far as businesses, it can be, if there's a requirement such as 25 or 50% occupancy, staff feels comfortable in coming up with a procedure to help businesses determine that occupancy number. So for example, if a business is allowed to have 100 folks in there and the governor says 50%, we believe we can train with the fire department, some other staff to help businesses determine their actual occupancy level, as well as some social distancing practices and best management practices. I can also attest that we have enforced, we have sent to our business development board through the ESF 18 function, the, the new OSHA guidelines that have been sent out as of yesterday, as it relates to getting businesses back up and running. It's a good read, it's about 64 pages, so it'll be good to read during your stay at home. Staff will continue to, can also advocate with, to the state for any irregularities that could be utilizing our lobbying resources, FAC, KLOE, and so forth. But most importantly, we believe we can help educate businesses as it relates to site visits, creating uniform interpretation of the documents. When going through what we did with the golf course, which, which may come up for discussion later, we feel like we've got a pretty good communication stream as, as giving out clear distinct points of occupancy, social distancing, best management practices, and how to reach out to those businesses through our social media. And more, most importantly, we will continue to do the outreach campaign, but as well as we are in the process of drafting a plan to open Martin County. And in drafting that plan, we're working in coordination with federal and state regulations and guidelines, so that we're following the same pace as what the state has said with the floor. And we're appropriate, and we need to be higher than the floor, we plan to do that. The way to opening Martin County, where we've begun drafting the plan, is we base that on the federal plan for Opening Up America, which was provided to us by the federal government. And in that document, it creates five phasing metrics that governments are to look at. And from the federal perspective, it was looking at from a state, and then we took it from the state, looking at it from a county level. Those five metrics are downward trajectory of cases within 14 days, downward trajectory of positive tests, no crisis care facilities in operation, I apologize, I have an extra S on that. And those are those facilities that you might have saw in New York where they had tents and parking lots, as long as you don't have those in there. ICU beds being available is probably the number one metric that we would be looking at, as well as overall hospital occupancy. And we would be working in close coordination with our partners at the Cleveland Clinic and the Florida Department of Health. And then testing procedures in place, which we do have testing in place. I do realize that there has been comments on social media and in the public about, and concerns in regards to testing and robust testing. But ultimately, when you read the document from the federal government, probably the number one biggest clue is, is what is your hospital occupancy? What are their crisis care facilities? And do you have ventilators and do you have ICU beds available? And as of today, we do have ICU beds and we do have ventilators available. So we would meet a positive mark on that metric. In order to move from one phase to another and opening, the federal government says that you must meet all five phasing metrics. This slide demonstrates the, we are in the draft form of how we would do the phasing. The orange section represents where we are today at the current restrictions. And in order to meet those five, you would move up to the next phase, which would be Phase Two, and then Phase Three, and so on and so forth. We do have, I have, we have staff working on, in all of our departments, as to what that phasing will look like, as far as staffing, as far as, you know, anything from two people per golf cart, how are the beaches would operate? So staff has been working diligently on that. And then my final slide is, is really our staff's recommendations. Staff recommends, number one, that we have a special meeting on Tuesday, April 28th. And the reason we would do that is it will allow us to give adequate time in order to interpret any recommendations from the governor's task force. It does, you know, if, if the history is going to present what we will probably be presented today, it is going to take time for us to digest what is actually being communicated, and more importantly, allow us to project a unified type of message that is consistent with very little changes. We have been obtaining what's other surrounding counties are doing based on staff recommendations. And because, and we have been in close coordination, not only with our counties to the north, but as well to the south. We do plan to provide guidance on the governor's task order, as well as provide guidance for small businesses on regulations. I think the, the other thing when we're looking at the draft plan is, albeit the counties to the north of us have their opening guidelines, a lot of that is predicated on their location and their actual geographic location in the county, in the state of Florida. Because of our proximity to Palm Beach County, we cannot ignore that in the past, when we have opened things and Palm Beach County has had theirs closed, our beaches, boat ramps, parks, even today, have visitors or were overrun by those folks who had closures to the south of us. So this coordination with the counties really is very geographic. And it allows you, in taking it, allows you to look at the infection vectors, as well as protecting residents. And I know we're going to be talking about that at this point. So staff's recommendation are those three major bullets, and we're more than happy to take any questions, comments, or concerns. And perhaps maybe we can disconnect the TV so I can see the chair before we really go at it. Because, although maybe it could be like Sheldon on Big Bang Theory, and Mr. Commissioner Jenkins could be a big hat on the, on the TV.
Here comes your mover.
What? Oh, you got it, okay.
You got that other cord, Lord.
One more cord.
Thank you, guys.
And there is the young Morgan Freeman, yeah. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Sheriff, if you could come forward, just because I think the conversation about Phase Two and Phase Three, probably more importantly, Phase Two. And I don't know if you've had a chance to go through it, and George, if you want to go through it or want us to go through it. Effectively, I think what this says is... go through it, or want us to go through it, effectively, I think what this says is that this moves us sort of into a gradual reopening. Martin County golf course opens two cart, or two people per cart. Martin County resident members, beaches open, no food, boat ramps open, parks open, no programming, unorganized sports, daycare is open, small business, recovery center, limited library services, meeting, public meetings in assigned rooms. When we talked yesterday about this, and I don't know what you feel about this, but if we were to move into this phase, one suggestion that popped up in the conversation was that on our beaches, that we maybe only open up our guarded beaches first, not all of them. And I don't know if that would be something that would help you manage the flow or the capacity at those beaches, if we limited them to two or three locations. And it just, I think that would be helpful to get some comment, feedback from you on that.
Let me direct my answer specifically to the enforcement paradigm that you're asking me about. So I'll eliminate any philosophical overlay, any political push, and just talk about the practicalities of your question. The, I think the summary answer would be this. If you do partial openings like that, and you try to designate specific beaches that are okay, and leave us tasked with keeping other beaches that are not okay, it would be, it would be a difficult lift at best, and probably impractical. And probably leave us with a situation where you're causing my deputies to have to interact with normal law-abiding people who just don't get the memo, haven't heard the restrictions, get to a legitimate beach, and then try and see that it's, there's no parking, and move to another beach. I would have to post deputies probably at every beach access that's not in, following your question, that wouldn't be guarded or open.
One more just added question. I think the idea is that the other beaches would have locked gates, which would prevent people from at least accessing directly. But I heard what you said, and I get that. Also too, I think, Taryn, our conversation yesterday, St. Lucie County was talking about opening theirs, but just to walking and something.
Yes. In my, we've received draft orders, if you will, from St. Lucie and Indian River County. They, the prohibited activities are sitting, standing, sunbathing, no coolers, no blankets, no umbrellas. You can jog, walk, swim, paddleboard. You have to keep moving, essentially, is what they, and they are, in St. Lucie, it looks like they're not restricting the beaches. In Indian River, they are restricting it. They have eight total beach accesses. I think we've got 18 or 19, not including Hope Sound. So they're restricting it to, in Indian River, to their guarded beaches only. There's four. And then their lifeguards, they are going to have them help with enforcement. They've initiated the same restrictions. No standing, or sunbathing, or sitting on the beach. No groups of 10 or more. And they're going to take their park folks and make them beach ambassadors to go around and educate the public where they see violations occurring. So that's the latest that we got from them. Palm Beach County, they're heavily reliant on Miami Dade. That area has created a region. So when they look to situations that are impacting them, they look to the region. So it's Palm Beach, Broward, and Miami Dade. That's a huge populous area, if you will. They are not ready to do anything yet. If they do, they will focus on what Miami Dade is doing. So until Miami Dade opens their beaches, they don't feel that they're, because they experience the same thing. I think, I know Commissioner Heatherington went to the beach and checked out the parking situation, and people just were everywhere. She witnessed it. She took pictures and was just like, couldn't believe what the folks were doing. So enforcement is going to be a large, large issue for us.
Imagine if it was a couple hundred dollar parking ticket?
Yes, yes.
So I guess in response to that, I mean, my thought is, I, you know, just listening to the sheriff discuss the idea about how we could even control the parking access issue, I can't even begin to imagine how you tell people you can't go to the beach and sit down and put out.
Well, we've used the example where, you know, you have an elderly person, and it's 90 degrees outside, and they get winded, or they feel lightheaded. You're gonna, you know, who's gonna want to be the enforcer of that? And the sheriff, you know, someone will take a picture. Someone will post it out there and say, look at what Martin County's doing, and.
90-year-old will sit down for a moment.
And the other thing you have too, and a lot of our beaches, the ones I go to, you have a lot of families that go with little kids that set up tents for shade. And they're not going, you know, they're not going to walk their infants up and down. I just don't know how that works. So from my opinion, when it comes to that time, when we come to a decision tree where we would move to a phase two, I just, from my opinion, it's opening up the beaches.
And I forgot to add, they're looking to do this, Indian River and St. Lucie is looking to do this next Tuesday. That was the date that was in their orders.
Commissioner Smith, just while your question is still not completely answered, there was, there was two parts you just addressed. One would be the absolutely inane, unenforceable trick that they're trying north of us, which will be an abysmal failure. The other one is, if you try to close some beaches, and the, and your point was, if we blocked access, we'll get the same overflow push. I don't have the deputies to push back on that. And just so that, so that you clearly understand what our resources are. On any given day, right now as we sit here, north of the Roosevelt Bridge are four delineated zones in which a Martin County Sheriff's deputy will be. In addition, there's traffic, or detectives moving through there, other specialized units, community oriented policing. But from day to day, I have four deputies north of the Roosevelt, to the county line, and east and west. And one of those is the mall area, and then I won't go through the minutia of all the other zones. One of those zones is the beaches. So obviously, I couldn't do, I couldn't even begin that enforcement, any of this enforcement with one deputy. So I've got to start pulling deputies from other places. So just, we'll do whatever you ask. We will try to do whatever you ask. But that's the picture of our resources.
That's why I wanted you here. That's why I wanted you here. I just, I think we inherently know that answer. It's just, I think we need to hear it. Our residents need to hear the challenge of what it looks like doing this, because it's not easy. And it's not something where I think unfortunately, tomorrow, you turn off the light switch and everything's fine. So I like the phased approach. I thought it was pretty productive in terms of its approach. But I also thought it was important with the sheriff, who would end up ultimately enforcing all of this, to at least see it here, and comment on it with all of us, so that we understand his thinking. Thank you, Sheriff.
And Mr. Chair, staff in its drafting of the plan would absolutely work in coordination with the hospital, FDOH, the sheriff's department. I mean, I think it's Lieutenant Grimsdale and I have become pretty close friends, I think, almost now, with the amount of communication. We're probably going to go golfing with each other in about 12 months, so. But yes, we would work in coordination with everybody on that.
And the last piece of this that we didn't really expand upon, and I think even a lot of our speakers this morning, public speakers, have commented on, is the business side. And how do we give direction? What does that direction look like? How do we start allowing, when that time comes, restaurants to open up? What do the numbers look like? What is the guidance, or what are the percentages that go out, so that we are abundantly clear? Because I was talking with somebody yesterday, and I thought this was incredibly helpful. When we make this decision, and whatever gets into phase two and phase three, I think our nonprofit world, our business development board, our chambers, our economic councils, all need to be on the same page. Everybody needs to agree to that strategy, so that regardless of who anybody talks to in the community, you get the same answer. And if we don't, if we're not succinct on that response, it'll be really difficult if the sheriff has to get involved, or whoever gets involved, to even monitor or enforce how and what that looks like. So.
I think, Commissioner, to that point, I'll just give you a piece for you to think about. The more comprehensive, the broader, and the easier it is to understand your direction, the easier it will be for us. If you try to nuance it too minutely, it becomes unenforceable, because we have a communications gap. People are overloaded with Twitter, and Facebook, and the news media. It's hard for us here, who are so linked in, to understand. We have thousands of people in this county that just don't get up and pay attention to what we're doing here. And so if they get word that the beaches are open, the beaches are open. Not the guarded beaches, not, you can't stop. The boat ramps are open. They're open. Not to this person or that, they're just open. So I get that there's an aspirational desire on your parts to kind of send a message, we're open, we're not totally open, we're, we want you to be sunbathing, but we don't want you to get COVID. Those are wonderful aspirational thoughts. But they're very difficult for us in law enforcement. So people need a soundbite. The restaurants are open. The beaches are open. The boat ramps are open. The parks are open. And anything much more than that, really, really, really becomes a problem for us. Which I know puts a big burden on you, because you want to do it kind of incrementally. People don't think like that.
Ms. Woods?
I just wanted to jump in real quick. The, my office is listening to the meeting. We've done a little bit of quick research. We're statutory, we're statutorily limited to parking tickets to $30. You know, whether or not there's a way through the emergency to change that, I doubt it. There is the ability to ticket up to $500 if they're in the right of way. But I know with the sheriff, the vast majority of our ticketing is parking infractions. And again, to your point, Commissioner Campi, it's not a big deterrent. But we're limited by state law.
Limited in the dollar amount, have at it in the quantity.
I'm going to like to.
That's up to the sheriff. I don't.
I also would like for Ms. Woods to elaborate on the ability to restrict our access to just Martin County residents.
Yes, we.
I wrote that down.
Yeah, we legally cannot restrict the beaches to Martin County residents under.
And the boat ramps.
And the boat ramps, because we acquired those facilities with federal and state funds, and they don't allow us to discriminate.
And Mr. Chair, I just wanted to address Commissioner Smith's comments. We have put together a team with the business development board, the council of chambers, FPNL, career source. We do have an economic team put together, and we've learned from the previous closures, and we're waiting very anxiously for what the governor's task force will push out, which we think will be today, digest that, and have a concise message ready for when the safer at home order drops on April, on April 30th into May 1st. And we agree with the sheriff. It's got to be very clear and concise as to what you can and can't do. And also getting out that OSHA, the guidelines, and I'll have our communications team working on like a one pager to summarize that. So albeit the county did not close the businesses, we want to help them reopen in a safe, efficient manner. And then we'll work with the sheriff's department as to how they can safely enforce those. Because it will be, we will, we will stumble, we will struggle. I mean, as businesses, there will be misinterpretations. But we, just like the golf courses, here we are, two weeks down the road, and we've got 95%, 98% compliance every day. So I feel that that will be the same thing for our businesses.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I'm looking at the phasing metrics. And are these federal or state?
The phasing metrics came from the federal, let me get to that slide. Those came directly from the federal government.
Okay, so the first one is downward trajectory of cases within 14 days. We're not close, anywhere close to meeting that, correct?
I haven't analyzed, I haven't actually conducted an analysis of the metrics, but I would have to rely on FDOH and our emergency managers to confirm that.
Well, you have, you have to have, you have to meet all five. So that's the first important test that has to be met. And we can't meet them. And also, I read this morning that the governor bumped back the task force report.
I had not heard that.
It's, it was, we all expected it was going to come out today. I think that it's been bumped back to Tuesday or Wednesday. So there's a, there's a suggestion here that we meet on Tuesday. If the governor's task force isn't coming out with their recommendations until Tuesday, then it would be fruitless for us to meet on Tuesday. So can we find out about when we might be receiving guidelines?
Yes, we will look at that. And when we had made this presentation, it was still under the assumption that he was, that that office was going to come out with something today. So we would arrange that accordingly.
And the Indian River and St. Lucie County are opening their beaches with restrictions on Tuesday? They're not going to be open this weekend?
That is my understanding.
Yeah. That's our understanding.
This is just another caution for a meeting on Tuesday. If we don't have, I'd like to see some, some real-time, you know, reports back from those counties on what happens when they open the beaches on Tuesday.
Commissioner, I will say, from staff's perspective, our biggest waves, if you recall before, when our beaches were open and Palm Beaches were closed, our biggest influx, and I think the sheriff could attest this, our biggest influx was on the weekends. Saturday and Sunday was when we saw the record crowds and folks migrating north.
Well.
Yeah, but we're still, we're still under shelter at home. So there are a whole lot of people who are at home.
Yeah.
Who will go, who will go to the beaches if you say that they're open.
Correct.
Commissioner Hurd, I'm not saying, what I'm seeing the latest reports within three hours, four hours ago, is that the governor is still expecting to get those recommendations, and will take the weekend to evaluate and offer something after the weekend, as far as guidance.
Okay.
But we'll continue to monitor.
We were going to have, I see by our list here, a meeting on Tuesday, potentially on Tuesday, and then Friday again. Why don't we split the difference and say Wednesday? And just have one meeting next week, rather than two update meetings? Is that?
Is that the pleasure of the board?
I, well, again, if he doesn't come out with it, and it comes out Tuesday night, then Wednesday's probably not practical either.
Well, we can cancel it too. If we don't have solid information to work, work on, then, you know, we can, we can do public notice for a meeting on Tuesday. And if it's not going to be fruitful, then we cancel the meeting and just stick with Friday.
I think, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think to Commissioner Hurd's point, I was also, if both Indian River and St. Lucie County are going to initiate their first day on a Tuesday, I think having two meetings in a week, especially close together, are not necessary for people to follow along. And another opportunity for us to gather in this room. I agree with the strategy of having it on Wednesday. We'll know if Tuesday is a total free-for-all up north of us. I think one of the important points that we heard is that Palm Beach County is waiting to see what Miami Dade and Broward are doing. But that's the same situation that we're in. So in other words, Palm Beach County, which is approximately 1.5 million residents, are waiting to see what their much larger neighbors to the south are going to do, because it'll have a tremendous effect on them. That's us. I think it'll be interesting to see, and I had a couple of conversations with some commissioners from St. Lucie and Indian River, and they're in the same boat that we're in. They're trying. I really liked what the sheriff said, because for me, it's always about enforceability. Because, one, it puts his department in a very difficult spot. Two, as he said, engage normally law-abiding citizens that are just trying to do the right thing. Everyone's emotions are a little tweaked, so that creates a different problem. But he doesn't need to create artificial stress and strain with his constituents and his residents. They spend all of the rest of the history of the department trying to build those relationships. He doesn't need to lose them. Commissioner Smith was talking about some of the beaches versus all of the beaches. You and I, Ms. Krista, had that conversation yesterday. The first logical step would be like, well, we'll only do the four guarded beaches. But it does send a muddied message of, for the folks that don't go to those guarded beaches, that don't, that don't maybe even intend on going in the water. They just want to walk along, or fish, or something. So I understand that. I'd like to see what happens on Wednesday. My ultimate goal as a commissioner, and I think all of us would agree, is to first and foremost, look after our own Martin County residents. But under our geographical situation. But under our geographical situation, we really have no choice. And it really comes into play if you go to the state's dashboard and they have it by color based on where the cases are situated throughout the state. And the darker the color is, the higher the concentration of cases and sadly also fatalities. Miami Dade and Broward and Palm Beach are very dark statewide and Martin County is sitting right on top of them. So although we don't necessarily want to be like bad neighbors or, you know, sort of discount those folks, we have no choice but to. The the statistics are the statistics. So I would very much like to ease the restrictions that Martin County residents are under, but you heard from Ms. Woods, we are not allowed, and and that's a message that needs to be repeated over and over and over because most of our emails say, shut it down for everybody except Martin County residents. We cannot do that at the boat ramps and we cannot do that at the beaches. So until we can protect our residents from a a large influx, and and we did, remember, we kept our beaches open later than Palm Beach County, and that first Saturday Jupiter Island was nearly overrun. I think that's why they started to to work on that drawbridge to keep people, to keep people out, because twice, just just coincidentally, twice the following week, it didn't work.
It legitimately broke.
Allegedly, it broke in the up position, not in the down position. It broke in the up position. So we we closed the Hope Sound Beach that Saturday and figured, okay, maybe the folks won't continue to come north to Stewart or Jensen Beach. And the sheriff was the first one to report to us that there was not even a possibility of social distancing because, I don't know if these were his words or mine, they were shoulder to shoulder on the beach. And, you know, reasonable people, you know, constitutionalists and freedom of of our free rights in America, we have to focus on at least a little of that. We don't have the ability to protect our residents from a massive onslaught that'll be coming our way. And St. Lucie County and Indian River do have a little bit of an advantage because we're in between the sou- southern counties and them. I think even if you look at what they did with their boat ramps, because their boat ramps are open seven days a week, we did hear, and we mentioned it at the Tuesday meeting, that some commissioners that are lifelong residents of their counties had never seen anything like what had happened. People had driven up all the way from Broward and and point south and just overwhelmed them. I mean, I I want to be the first one as a former small business owner. I think we're spoke, we're focusing a lot of attention today on recreation, which I think is important, but I'd also like to us to spend some time focusing with the BDB and their and our chambers of commerce and the economic council on what do we do to get small businesses and medium-sized businesses open? That's the first thing we need to do. I like the recreational part and I know we can do joint conversations parallel, but the biggest issue that Martin County is facing is the fact that our businesses are closed.
George's phasing, even if we met all of those criteria, we're so dependent on everybody to the south that I I get your point in the beginning of this and I think we've been tasked with the responsibility of not creating a destination for people to the south to come, so.
Well, Commissioner, too, if I might add, when you look at the the demographic, I guess, or the geographic access for St. Lucie County to their beaches, you only have the Causeway, you have the Jensen Causeway and then the Fort Pierce Causeway. So when you think about what's convenient for them, it's convenient to go up Jensen Beach Causeway, obviously, and then you've got Jensen Beach right there. They have to then head north and the first beach access is quite a ways past all those condos. So that's another dynamic that we're faced with relative to our access and the ease of our access. And Commissioner Campy is right, Jupiter Island just got slammed. You went out and looked at it.
Beach Road looked like I-95. It was, it was amazing. But, okay. Anything else?
So I'm hearing you'd like to meet on Wednesday? Wednesday at nine?
Unless.
Something pops up and we need to.
So if something, if if this doesn't evolve the way we're hoping, we could push that back to Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I just put my two cents in on that? If we were to meet on Wednesday, if we found out that somehow magically St. Lucie and Indian River had a successful soft opening, if we wait till Friday, I don't think if we're going to strategize a beach plan, we would launch it on a Saturday or a Sunday. I think if Wednesday is still probably an appropriate day to meet, because I'd also like to see if we can come up with a business strategy. Businesses can open immediately. Our recreational issues would have to be slower.
Yeah, to that end, as you consider the phasing plan for reopening, it's going to be way easier to reopen businesses than his recreational facilities, way easier. They can self-police, you know, they're they're, they can, they can, it it will, that part seems to me that it should go before the public recreational things happen.
Mr. Chair, you have two public comments.
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, we have a new Morgan Freeman.
He looks like a young Harrison Ford.
Oh, okay.
Don Donaldson, Deputy County Administrator, reading the public comments that have been received. The first one is from, let's see, get to it. Sorry. This is from Amy Kane. It states, I'm writing to ask the commissioners to lift all county restrictions and closures that were ordered for the purpose of containing the spread of coronavirus as soon as possible. By all measures, the curve has been flattened, the health care system is not overwhelmed, and the debate of labeling about what is essential and non-essential, they are interrelated and inseparable, and the labels are insulting to human dignity and intelligence. Let individuals and businesses take responsibility for voluntary compliance with CDC guidelines and recommend recommended safety measures, which all levels of government have been doing a fine job of promoting. We cannot go on living in shutdown world without very serious public health, societal and economic consequences. The next, the next one is for, from Jennifer Nolan. Good morning, commissioners. I'm happy to see the numbers of for Martin County COVID-related cases are low and stabilized. So many of us are jobless or have had our hours cut back tremendously. I know people who are seriously depressed from having to stay home. I know people in need of elective surgery. Please open county beaches and boat ramps immediately. The numbers no longer support quarantine, however, perhaps you could recommend it for the immunocompromised and the elderly population or those who feel the need to swell self-quarantine. Please let us know about your plan to reopen the local economy. Thank you for your time. Let me see if there's anything else.
George, how about a little?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Cheryl, yes. So this is from Cheryl Smith-Brant. Please open the beaches with regulations similar to what Duval County has done. Walking on the beach while social distancing will not spread the virus. Sunlight and sand and the sea are good for the soul and mental health. Please open the beaches. Thank you. Cheryl Smith-Brant. And that concludes the comments that have been received during this agenda item.
Okay. We have two. Do you want to still stand there? Are we done with this here?
Hi, you're just kind of looking at me for a direction here.
I'm boy, it's busy.
We have two, we have two speakers in the room that would like to speak, so.
See you on Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. Jim. Hurlbert? Okay. Repeat that for the. Hurlbert.
Yeah, good morning. Not much of a comment, but more just a little bit of public education for you real quick. I'm a, got a biology degree, I'm an EMT firefighter, had hazmat training, infectious disease training, same thing that all of our firefighters have. For suggestions on opening up businesses and stuff, hopefully it is coming soon. Don't know what the governor's going to send down, but most politicians just sort of screw it all up anyway. And hopefully y'all can take a little guidance and set up your own criteria. I sent them in to y'all a while back. But basically, some misconceptions, social distancing versus masks. Those are two of the same thing. You don't have to wear a mask and then social distance. All right? The mask is better because social distancing doesn't really work. Just to give you a couple of instances here, this has been contaminated, this has been contaminated, even though people try and clean it. That lady infected that guy, that guy infected that guy, that guy infected that guy, all right? And the old guy who was setting up everything, he infected most of the room. And if he gets infected, he'll die in two weeks because he's probably got not in perfect health. So, and if I was infected, when I came to this building here, I infected the front door. I went through the bathroom, so I infected the bathroom. And then I probably infected most of the people in the room here. The only person that wasn't infected was the cute lady that left because she was wearing a mask and that guy's wearing a mask, but he keeps pulling it down over his nose, so he's infected too. So as outlined once before, you have to sort of follow procedures like an operating room or, sorry, the Cleveland Clinic guy is not here because they were using the same procedure when I saw it the other day, is you keep the places clean. This building here is all infected, but if anybody had the disease, because they've just spread it all around. So what should have happened, and some places are starting to do it, but as I said, the hospital does it, is you keep the store clean. If the store is already clean, you prevent the disease from coming into the store and then everybody's safe. So in this particular building here, there should have been a hand washing station outside of the door and everybody should have been required to wear a mask. And then therefore, this building was clean, it stays clean. If somebody even had the infection, they're protected. They're wearing a mask, their hands have been clean, they can't come in and spread it all around. You'll see most places, just like this place, they're trying to do it, but they're doing it improperly. And interesting enough, even though we are doing an extremely bad job of it, it hasn't spread very far, especially in Martin County, just because we're sort of spread out anyway. So it makes it a little easier not to infect each other there. So as you're dividing these plans up here for opening up businesses, every business in the county could open up tomorrow if they followed those two procedures. Wash your hands before you go into the building, that's for everybody, all right? And just wear a mask while you're in the building.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you.
Okay, Dan Baggot, Baggot? Might want to straighten that out when you get here.
That's going to be a tough act to follow. Simple question, more than a comment, and it kind of piggybacks off that. Do you think we should be mandatory for places, places like Publix, Walmart, where essential workers are at and senior citizens to wear a mask to enter those places?
Sir, this is public comment.
Oh, I didn't know, sorry. I thought I asked a question. Okay, well, I hope that's taken into consideration. It's one of the most common sense, easiest things we could do. And anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, with that, I believe we're at the end of our agenda. So our upcoming COVID meetings are next Wednesday, April 29th, May 1st, May 8th, May 15th, May 22nd, May 29th. Our regular board meetings are going to be February 5th and February 19th. I'm sorry, February, where did I come up with that? May 5th and May 19th, anyway. And it is Friday, so everybody have a, it's Thursday. Okay, everybody have a good weekend and we are adjourned. Thank you. It's Friday because I'm wearing pants.